Welcome to the meeting of Oakham Town Council, Wednesday 23rd of March. It is now 7pm. Just a little bit of housekeeping. This evening when making deputations, there is no requirement to stand. People when they do vote, make sure they raise their hands and keep them raised, because I want to make sure that we report everything accurately. And there is quite a lot on the agenda this evening, so I'm not going to say we're going to rush through it, but can we try and be succinct at what we're saying please? And don't talk over, okay? So, first order of business is apologies. Is everybody here? Everybody's here? If anybody does need to go or pop out then just get up and leave after you've asked permission to leave, okay? Second item is declarations of interests. Members are asked to declare if required any displacable pecuniary interest they may have in respect to items on the agenda and any other interest they may have in respect to items on the agenda. Does anybody declare or anybody want to? Minutes, it's to confirm the minutes of the meeting of Oakham Town Council held on Wednesday the 9th of March. Jasmine, I think you'll be abstaining because you weren't here. So, anybody got any comments, observations or adjustments? If not, can I have the proposal to accept? Proposed by Joyce, seconded by Martin. All those in favour? And then one abstention. Councillors' questions, just to answer any questions previously notified to the clerk under standing order nine. This question is put, will be given an answer without discussion. Question was put, Grant Thornton... Does the councillor mind me mentioning who put this forward?
No, you don't have to say it, it was me. And it was before the resignation.
Okay, well we're still there Martin. councillor Brooks put a question. Grant Thornton has reported its findings regarding councillor Alf Joess's unlawful expenditure of taxpayers' money. The law very clearly states any councillor cannot act unilaterally at any time and if they incur any unlawful or unauthorised expenditure, they are personally liable for the amount and not the council. What is the council doing to recover this unlawful spending? The answer without discussion is the former councillor Alf Joess has repaid £329. Thank you Martin for raising the question. Chairmans and members' reports, this is to receive a report from the chairman on functions attended and to receive any reports from members. I know I've got one report coming from Vince, it's a very brief thing from... There's one from myself, which you were affected. Oh yeah. Before Alf's resignation, Alf and myself attended RCC for a meeting. This is not unusual. About every quarter the chairman, the deputy chairman from this council meet up with the RCC. Also happens at Uppingham. These are the items that we discussed, it's very high level. Item one, town centre workshop. HB to confirm with DB that notes have been circulated. That was initials of people. Two, street lighting. Agreed that councillor M and DB would support a presentation on this to OTC. So as well, don't worry. And access to be given for OTC to see detailed spreadsheets etcetera. DB to follow up arrangements. Three, Oakham Cemetery. Discussion deferred to the following meeting. Four, CCTV. General support agreed for a refund when cameras are out of action. Ongoing contribution sought from OTC for monitoring TV will progress. Neighborhood plans and governance, no action required. Hunt was mentioned. It was agreed that RCC would continue to offer Catmas as a venue. PBH to progress with Hunt. Seven, castle walls. Agree further discussion required. Add to agenda for the next meeting. PPDB to prepare a paper for discussion. I will fill in on that, I suggested that should the review of the land that we own, should it be reconsidered that we do not own up until the top of the walls. Eight, setup of next meeting, which is by KH who is the person who organises the meetings. So that's all it was, it was a very high level meeting and it just where the headsheds share ideas and then it would have been passed back if any agenda items had come back. Anybody else looking around the table? Vince? Did you want to mention anything tonight? Please?
Following the planning, no, the publicity, promotions and publicity planning group, I am pleased to report that on the 21st of April at 18:30 we will commence Queen's celebrations with joint efforts from Catmas College Band and Drama, where we will be hosting an event for an hour and a half, so starting at 18:30, finishing at 20:00 hours with the lighting of the beacon which has been donated by RPC and PC Howard's. So we will be having real flames in the park, which will be supervised, which will have a risk assessment suitably endowed. Hopefully we will have Rutland Morrisman. We will have the church bells sounding as the beacon's lit, which is historical. And the board of left hand and I have a meeting tomorrow to ensure the timescale and timing of events coincides with the national events that have been held on the evening. I have got a local hostelry to supply a bar and a burger store. I would seek council's opinion on whether we have some small stall fare type rides and charity stalls just to enhance the park for the evening, because I've got people that are interested in coming, but it wouldn't be for the small working group to just make that decision, so...
Do you mind receiving that on email Vince?
I'm happy to put it out tomorrow if I can, but I really do need a decision by the weekend so that I can get these balls rolling, because we have just less than a month now. I'm open to a few questions, but keeping short because of the...
Okay, yeah, Joyce?
Standards? Standards?
I've not been able to get hold of the meeting yet.
All right.
When I get hold of the camp then I will try and get that in as well, but I've got a list of the programme events from the college, but to be fair, I think it would be better kept under...
Oh yes.
So it's more of a surprise of what's going on. But it will be song, dance and brass bands.
Martin?
The stalls and fare, would that not fall under the clerk's delegated powers for use of cuts close? If we have a small fare? Because we can't come to council, can we? It'd be too late to come to council.
It could be, what would it do, look at it? Could it come under delegate powers?
Well it could do, but I mean obviously I'd like a stare from members, what they would like to see.
At the end of the day, I don't want anything big there. It's not going to be like Hollands were there for the week. It will purely be for that evening, just to enhance the park, to keep people... Yeah, just to keep people there.
I think if anybody could just give any feedback, positive or negative, in email to Vince, copying myself and Joyce, in fact copying everybody I think, so then we have a bit of a share on it.
Feedback, any yes or a no would be great. Not, well if this happens, all that happens. Yes, no, and a little bit of feedback would be appreciated. And that's about it, I think.
Yeah, that's fantastic, thank you Vince. Vince chose to head this up at one of the previous meetings and on a zero budget, to be fair, it looks like it's going to be grounded on the correlation of the Queen herself.
We have, to be fair, we have got a lot of local interest supporting this. We've got a stage that's being provided by Funky Tents that's being paid for by Art Sir Rutland. There's a lot of work in that has gone on. Not only me, part of the group as well.
Yeah, no, but you did, when he said he was going to lead it, he's already... Right, okay. Any deputy, any other reports or anything? No, cool, brilliant, okay. Right, members of the public? Oh, big volume. Sorry you said you had to.
Okay, very, very, very quickly, this is very brief. New accounting software went in yesterday. As you're aware, training for us and myself is taking place at the end of May on that. In the meantime, we've got to run with our existing account software and the end of year will have to be produced on that. And a short term licence will be required to cover this while we change over from one to the other. Our paper will be coming to you on April 13th on that. Also, you've got a little bit of brief information there about the community governance review. The closing date for responses is the 29th of April. Could you please, you know, take the time and trouble to sort of have a look at the links? Because this is going to be on the April 13th meeting, so a bit of advance warning on that one. We do have our copies if anybody wants.
Thank you. Okay, members of the public, you've got a second chance now then. Any deputations or comments for members of the public, mate? Okay, working groups, understanding groups, strategy assurance. This is to receive a written report from the neighbourhood understanding group. So this is... Oh, to note it, so... Did you want to say anything on this paper? Oh, there's papers in. Martin, what do you all think about?
I don't have the document with me, but I think we've actually had this one at the last meeting because it jumps out certain things about meetings with barre.
Continuation pages, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
I think we can't really note too much on this. It appears as a sheet missing, so we can't do much more than that. Can we bring it back in April as well then? As another agenda item, I'm not going to prefer it, just bring it back as another... So note what we've already seen.
Yeah, we will be updated again by the end of the term.
Just to explain, these new sheets that you see, these new strategy documents, it actually contains everything on it and it could be three or four sheets thick. So you'll actually see everything that's gone off and what's most recent as well. So you will always see the same information while that is arrived working document, okay?
But not the new today.
No, not so. Just to go. Item nine, this is councillor Brooks's paper. Now, how are we going to progress this Martin? Is it your documents or over you initially?
Yes, I don't have to stand.
No, you don't have to stand, no.
Well, we were going to proceed in a way which seems to have changed since our formal meeting, but I'm wondering if we should still give the opportunity for people to make that decision.
Two, nine two?
No, no, we were swapping it around. That basically that we make the decision whether we are going to carry on going forward and then that items is out completely and then we work on the second.
Right, so what is, is there a proposal coming out of that?
Yeah, I think I'll do it because it's a bit uncertain still, but the proposal is that due to the fact of, I suppose, lack of information that we were given at the time of making the previous decision, that we walk away from this.
Right, the proposal from councillor Brooks is that we do not continue with the cemetery handover process. Does anybody want to second that proposal? No seconded then?
No, that's fine. It was just that some people said that, and I think it changed their opinion through the meeting.
I think the important thing probably helped clarify some points. Okay, that's not a problem, thank you though Martin for raising it. It was a valid point to raise. So where do we go next on this document?
Well, obviously we've come to the situation now of reviewing the working group and the way the working group goes forward. And we won't use the word which came up in an email to me about being unprofessional because that's offended some people. What we want to do is to try and get to the situation where some of those things that I've highlighted as instructions on there for the group to do, I've been pointed out by the solicitor, like the list and things, but so these things which I've put in front of you this evening can be changed before it's proposed.
Well, did you want to work through your proposals here? For instance, on proposal one that you have on this document, it says Oakham Town councillor Park appoints Peter Hines to the cemetery working group due to his past experience, knowledge and professionalism.
Yeah, well shall we drop the word professionalism as it's offended people?
Okay, can I do?
But that wasn't Joyce to put that in my head. It was an email that came to me.
Are you saying Martin that your proposal is that Oakham Town councillor appoints Peter Hines to the cemetery working group due to his past experience and knowledge?
And knowledge, yes.
Are you happy to be proposed, Peter?
Yes, can I just make a comment?
Please do.
Very brief. I haven't sought this, but I'm very happy to have input because I did help run the cemetery elsewhere. Helped to purchase the new land. And I also chaired the audit and risk committee at Rutland County Council and my hat will be very much risk.
Brilliant, brilliant. So that's a proposal by Martin, seconded by Stan. All those in favour? You can vote for yourself by the way.
No, I'll go first.
So... And one abstention. So congratulations. Martin, I'm not trying to lead you, but on your second proposal you put Oakham Town councillor appoints Michael Elliott to the cemetery working group due to his past experience and knowledge.
And that was purely due to his financial background and what he's doing with finances at the moment and he has pointed out certain things to me about financial.
Are you happy for that proposal to stand then as your proposal?
Yeah, we've dropped professionalism.
I've already done that. Michael, are you happy to be...
He was the other day.
Nominated.
Nominated, that's all, thank you. Okay, so proposed by Martin, seconded by Stan, all those in favour? You can vote for yourself Martin. That's one abstention.
Right, and then proposal three, which the proposal can be changed because my wording is not always perfect because I'm not qualified. So I will read it as it is, but if any members feel that it should be changed...
Do you mind if I went into agenda and make an observation? Do you think it would be wise, so that you don't restrain the working group, is that we defer the remainder of your proposal so the working group can use this agenda item to build up how it should move forward? Because we don't know...
Well, I'm just concerned, you know, when I get stopped in the town by a former mayor that this has been going on since 2008.
Okay, I'll let you count it.
They can add to it and I just want that the working group has a clear... Well, people don't have to accept all these.
No, no, that's fine, okay.
Because I want it to have a clear purpose so that we are not accused of being the problem. The cemetery working group are instructed to ask Rutland County Council to carry out all the works required to agree dates these works should be completed by. This should then be reported back to full council and the council solicitor should receive these reports.
Anybody want to second that? Michael Elliott, seconded, all those in favour? Right. Are you counting them?
I'm abstaining because you can't give a date at the moment.
No, but that's what they've got to work with to get the date. But at the moment they have no instructions to do anything.
To abstentions, oh, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, four...
The cemetery working group should check all agreed works are completed. A progress report should be produced for full council and copied to the council solicitor. If the works are not completed as agreed, the working group should find out the reason why this is not completed and agree the revised date with Rutland County Council.
Can I say something? Thank you, yes, please. We don't need to be told this. Okay, you mean you don't need it to be read out? Okay, right, okay. Well, Martin's read that one out as his fourth proposal. Does anybody want to second that proposal?
You do need unfortunately to be given instructions as a working group.
Gentleman, please.
No, the proposal is by me and if the rest of the council agree with it, then it's not by me solely.
Right, item four was proposed by Martin, it's been seconded by Jasmine. Yes Jasmine? All those in favour?
And if I can just have a comment, the only reason these have been brought is because, is because we haven't had reports and that's where doubt has been put in people's minds.
I get it, I do get it. Right, five then. Can everybody read that or are you going to read it out Martin? Do you need, do you want to read it out?
Does everybody have a copy, they know what's been... That's the worst of the issue, people don't know what's been proposed.
Can I just say something here? That Alison and myself met with officers from RCC last week and I do not think that number five is necessary at all. That's my own personal view.
No, that's fine, no, thank you for that. Proposals there written in front of you, are you proposing item five?
Yeah, I still propose it.
Proposed by Martin, seconded by Michael Elliott, all those in favour? Right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, oh, nine then, yeah, yeah, nine. And two, against Joyce?
Abstaining.
Abstaining, thank you. And six, the working group are instructed to see quotations. Is this your sixth proposal?
Yeah, if it could.
If everybody's read that, Martin, you're proposing it? Who's going to second it? Vince Howard. All those in favour? Right, ten and one, one against. Seven, the proposal I've written down there, are you proposing that as well Martin?
Yeah, because this is what the solicitor said.
No, that's fine, thank you. Proposed by Martin, seconded by Michael Haley. All those in favour? We've got ten, no, eleven. Thank you.
Chairman, if I could just ask, say thank you, but is there anything, because it's an opportunity before you close the item, is there anything that I've left off that other members would like?
Okay, is there any other comments or anything anybody else feels should be included on this document at this time? No? Well, thank you, yes, sorry Vince. I think the working group will read it back.
The working group to be thanked for that.
Well good, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you Martin for bringing that up before. Yeah, do you want to mention that now? Right, okay, yeah, I formally announced that I am standing down for the working group because I do believe that five people on the working group is excessive and that four people is fine. So, and to give a whole new fresh output, and I say my reason for that is mainly due to my personal work commitments.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add? My thanks to you because you have worked jolly hard on this.
Well, I've done a bit. And what I will do is I will circulate all the documents I have to...
To you.
No, I'm going to give it to Michael and Peter. And Joyce and Stan, they probably got it, all right?
You could still be a member of the working group, but those don't reduce your workload. But you don't want to do that.
We're going to...
Stand fast.
Brilliant, don't worry, I'm always on hand to answer your questions. Right, next is review of the council structure. Now this is where it was at the last meeting, the council structure document sort of failed a little bit. So this was to appoint members for a working group and to agree on terms of reference to the group. Anybody want to head this up in the... Oh, Richard, you can add it up. Could you give the report? No? On here, if everybody's read the blue paper, if everybody's read the blue paper, the meeting of the council held on March 9th.
I think we've got a must-accept of this.
He offered. Take this, come and pass.
Are you happy with what's happened?
Yeah, we'll speak to you another day.
Chair, is it deferred? I know it was deferred last time. To have a bit more time to look at it in depth.
Yeah, the idea was that the working group is to look at it.
I don't think anyone wants to do it.
Does anybody else think it should be deferred or do...
Do we have a working group and who's...
No, this is to form a reform one. Martin?
Can I propose that the whole item is just scrapped? And then if the decision is needed, that committees are changed like part of planning becomes planning. Then it's dealt within the new council.
So, has this come up, I will table them. Councillor Brooks proposes this paper is discontinued. Does anybody want to second that? No. Right, does anybody, does this want to be deferred, as councillor Howard said? Councillor Howard's proposed it's deferred?
To when?
April 13th. Because that's the next council meeting.
Why just keep deferring?
We're only setting up a working group, okay? Yeah, I just think that in view of the fact that the day is looming and we are so fluid as a council at the moment with other things that are changing, I just think at the moment it would be appropriate to defer it to the next one.
Can we, if Vince is going to propose that and nobody's seconded it yet, could I add then that we defer it until the first meeting of the new council? Because we've got a lot of things coming up with the end of year AGM and things and it seems to be a bit in the way.
Okay, right, there's proposal on the table, if you're happy with the caveat that it's deferred to the new council. A natural event, second, which is May 11th, seconded by councillor Brooks, all those in favour?
Yeah, and that gives us a fresh start to thinking.
One, yeah? Hands raised if you're happy.
To defer.
Two, raised.
Three, four, five, six, eight.
Eight, all those against? Three, four, so that's, and clearly it's deferred to all May.
Give people a chance to talk about it and decide what they really want to do.
The review of the council's risk assessment to approve any changes and to approve the document. Any comments or observations? From...
I put my hand up, yeah.
No, I'm looking mad and you have to see your pen quickly.
Yeah, I have two comments and unfortunately they're not numbered, so it's a bit difficult, but it's the employer liability. And I would like to see we get to the situation in that...
Can you direct us what page you are on?
Well, there's no numbers Joyce, sorry.
One, two, three, four...
No, no, what's the point, Martin?
Well, the point is on, it's titled employer liability. I noticed the requirements about all the employment rules and regulations and things under risks which are described as medium. So I was of the opinion that in that box of action agreed and improvements that the staffing committee is reviewed considering that there has been change and that any membership of that staffing committee is trained in employment law. Because how do they know what the risks are?
I think it's one of the reasons they sought employment law advice from Moses. And that's not a biblical person, that is an organisation.
But I think we've got to review how the staffing committee is structured. So I wanted that to add in the box.
Richard's made a note of that and come to Michael, then I'll go on to Jasmine.
And I've got one other comment, but...
Well, these two alternatives are mutually exclusive. I think the staffing committee could have some awareness changing of issues but they're still going to need access to specialist HR.
Yeah, I'm not certain, because we do have a contract with Employment Protection Limited over the next three or four months.
Thank you for raising that, I was going to come to Jasmine then.
I have one more comment on it.
Can I come to Jasmine then?
Oh, I thought you were going to let me finish. Sorry, no, your turn.
So is Michael, I have got down here that I felt that...
Do you like that? Second point please.
Second point is the high risk legal liability of installation of Christmas displays. Without going into too much detail, I did actually point out at Christmas time some very serious issues and an email was distributed to members telling them to ignore me. So what I'm saying at the moment, because if members were minded to walk about in the street, they would see that all electrical boxes are up in the air and many are still open bearing live cables. I had to report to Rutland County Council that street lighting cabinets weren't locked and exposed to the danger of young people whatever getting electrocuted. So at their cost, at their cost, they had to get someone out to go and lock them all.
So contact just left them open though, to be fair.
Well, a fairy did it then, okay. Anyway, so I wanted in that box like we have now, which is brilliant for the people like fairs and circuses, that they had some inspections. So I'd like to see that the installations are visually inspected to show that they're not got live cables showing and also when they're taken down, the same thing happens because it's a long time since Christmas to have boxes open and...
So post-inspection, installation inspection, post-inspection?
Start certificate or that sort of ilk so that it's inspected prior to the installation and inspected post-installation.
So pre-installation and post, three inspections?
Well, it needs to be, you need to be, or somebody needs to be there to tick it off to say that's been installed correctly.
Okay.
And then secondly, it needs to be ticked to say it's been removed correctly and it's now safe and fit for use.
Tracy?
Can we not just take some photographs?
I did that. You're always told to ignore them.
Yeah, we can do, we're basically what we're saying, we need to come up with some kind of strategy when inspection is done.
Yeah. And that doesn't have to be Richard, a member could be asked to go and do it.
It needs to be a trained person that can...
Okay. Well, the council could determine at some point if they want to appoint a qualified electric installer, that's the council's choice, but Richard's made a note for the purpose of this risk assessment. a qualified electric installer, that's the council's choice, but Richard make a note for the purpose of this risk document.
Okay, so that's, um, review stuffing committee, members of it trained in employment law on board. Employer liability, legal liability, Christmas lights, uh, pre-installation, digitally inspected, post-installation. Uh, also when taken down, council to consider employing, uh, contract check or something like that.
Hey, Martin, the, the actual figure that we go into is classes the town's infrastructure, which Ruffington County Council, I believe, maintained after a high standard. Because when there was, when there was an issue identified this year, when you identified it, I asked our C C to actually check the infrastructure, and they did do that at the early expense. So, but anyway, we've got it covered. Any other comments or observations on that risk register? Peter?
Yes, I did raise it last time. Um, slight concern about the finance risk. Um, we've got quite a number of, quite large investments, and I think assets need to be spread. And secondly, either we agree, or the, the finance subcommittee or whatever they are, agree and approve lists of where we can invest, mindful of like the Icelandic bank situation.
Yeah, you can do that. Can I, what's the...
We, we, thank you for raising that. We are looking to that, and we are currently waiting for rotation from independent financial advisor, working advisors on the best place to invest in a course where they require different roles. So what the, the working group is dealing with at the moment, so what do you want to come out?
Yes, Chair, if I may, I'm happy with that answer, but should that not be part of the risk strategy?
Yes, because whoever you get with...
It's not written down, is it?
Can we get, so whatever that strategy is, needs to be added into the risk register, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, Michael, then Martin?
I just think that a lot of the items on here, I haven't had a chance to say this to Richard before, should, we should look at this as a finance group, this whole document, because a lot of the elements of this are...
Have you looked at this document as a financial group?
No, not in the detail that is having.
Okay, so...
So it's an agreed improvement, finance working group to review.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And report back?
Yeah.
Can, can we, um, before we sign this off, if it has to go to the financial work, because I know, and I've got to be careful how I say it, this is actually mentioned in the audit report, and I think that's why it's come this evening.
Okay.
So I, I wouldn't like to say it was rushed, but could it be deferred so that it, um, they can look at it? And because I have raised the issue of the finances, the same as Mr. Eind, and I know they are aware of it, but it isn't recorded there.
I, I would say on the back of what you've just said there, and on what Peter, Michael, Michael have just said, is that what Richard has just written down is that the financial working group, the proposal is the financial working group now look at it, and then the deferment is put in place before we actually approve it by council.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah? So it is deferred until the financial working group are able to look at it. How long would the financial working group need?
Well, that, that is just a, um, this is just an action or an agreed improvement, uh, agreed approv, uh, agreed improvement. The financial working group look at the financial aspects of the risk management.
Yeah.
Okay, so the actual document isn't going to be deferred. The, this is just an agreed improvement.
Right, okay. So, so you'd be happy then, Michael, you'd be happy then that the council then approve this document with these amendments that are looked at, yeah?
I think it's got to establish it is, because that's, that's what we're going to do. But we will get to work on it for the future, as you just said.
Are you happy with that, Martin? But it's not deferred, so we won't go with the proposal, but in fact, that this document as it stands is approved by the council, and then that these things which have been noted by the clerk, I don't know if people want them to be, them to be read out, is an action.
And then the, the working group are given instruction, because they need that instruction to improve it or whatever if it's reviewed.
Sure, does everybody get that, Adam?
Well, that'd be, the, the financial working group will report back to the council on the financial aspect of this risk document.
That's what I'm...
And then the council can then make its recommendations to the council.
Yeah.
The council can then...
Confere.
Confirm it. So that's, that's the way it's going to work, so...
So first of all, we're, so we, do you want us to approve this document as it stands, right? So the proposal is that this document is approved by the council?
With the, with the agreed amendments.
With the agreed amendments. You're happy to propose that by Michael Haley, seconded by Michael Brooks, always in favour? Unanimous. Unanimous. Uh, asset register, finance working group. No, no, what's this? Asset register. Right, any comments or observations on the asset register? Everybody happy with the asset register? Look for a, a proposal to approve it? Proposed by Michael Haley, seconded by Stan Stubbs, all those in favour? Unanimous? Thank you, yes? Thank you. Ah, now the grant application. Any comments or observations on the grant application? We have only got, no, we haven't, basically, we've got five hundred pounds, I think. We've got two hundred and eighty-two pounds and fifty pence. The council can, if it choose to, apportion the five hundred pounds, it means we would be going over the grant budget. But I am told the council can do that. I will point out that this organisation is a, technically a tenant of the town council, and the work they are doing is to maintain the roadways and systems that are on that land that we own. Martin?
That was the point I was going to raise, is that they have been to the council before, and they're not the only one. We seem to take rent, which is practically not worth collecting, and we end up giving these organisations more money than they pay us. And they have members.
We have a...
It's not our fault if they don't seem to have the finance.
No.
I mean, I'm told by members of the public that, um, the rents are extortionate in allotments. You know, and even, somebody said to me, they can't, for an organisation I won't name, wants polytunnels, and I'm going to bring it up with Richard in a week. Um, but they can't afford to go and use one of these allotments.
The allotments are pissy. Sorry, um, I'll have to work around it.
I don't know how it works, but...
Surely it's been set by those who manage the allotment, hasn't it to do with that?
No, the, the rents are... The making, the rents are...
Forty pounds, forty pounds a year.
Yeah, because that's what he says.
Fourteen pounds a year to rent an allotment.
I know, I'm just, but, but they've got a lot of allotments, and, uh, and I don't see why we should keep, when it says in their terms of their lease that they are responsible for things. We paid for fencing for these people.
Yeah.
Only, what, a year or two ago.
And the water.
Yeah, and we're, and it's constantly coming back to us that we, we pay for things, and it's in their lease that they are responsible.
Well, it might do, but...
But we don't have all the money they need anyway.
It's, um, it's, it is our land, um, whether we, you know, we have worked on our, on other premises that we own, at the end of the day, I mean, if you look at the document, um, it's going to cost, um, uh, road planings, higher many digger roller. This is not the first time they've done work. They did this exercise a couple of months ago. They are redoing all the paths. Uh, but at the end of the day, they're enhancing it for the members. They did go for this year to increase their dues on the members, but it was, it was not well met.
Maybe that's why the other people don't want to do it.
Michael Elliott, and come to Vince, Michael.
Michael, the argument was impressive and well worked through, and they are taking in displaced holders from...
Yes.
Uh...
Good luck.
Crofto.
Yes, sir.
Which seems to read what they're serving to the town. And they, they've worked out what they want, they're contributing something themselves, I would, I would support it.
Okay, Vince?
I was going to say much the same, however, in view of what we've done in the past regarding the grant applications, the grant applications have been met, um, to a standard that we've dictated rather than the applicant, whereas this is sharing a full cost of five hundred pounds with no input from the society whatsoever.
Except for they're doing all the labour provided by the allotment volunteers. If you were to modify that...
Yeah, I understand that, but the guides at the last meeting had a seven pound, seven thousand pound overall bill for the, for the re-roofing of the guide hood, uh, and we put in a seventh of that. So, yeah.
I hear what you're saying, this is not the first time they've done this work on their allotments this year, this is the first time they've come to us, they've already done this exercise at least once. So they've already done a five hundred pound exercise. So it's not the first time they've come, it's the first time they've come to us this year. Anyway.
I, I agree, there is, as Michael said, I support it.
Martin?
Ask time. Um, what Vince is saying is that I, I am quite pleased actually that we are not doing grants anymore, because there is no such thing in the stand-in orders to say that there has to be match funding, that was changed to suit another organisation some time ago. Um, I am going to vote against it, because, because we, we, we have no continuity how we treat these people. The other week, we gave the Angling Society money for nothing.
Okay, thank you. Yes, there you are, right. Okay, well, let's move this forward then. Um, I think I've heard enough. Um, does anybody want to propose that this grant application is... Uh, if you want, you can do it where it's only the two hundred and eighty-two pounds fifty that's left in the grant budget, unless you want to go with the five hundred that you're going to draw it from, or presumably from reserves. So, what, what do you think? Michael Elliott?
I'm proposing to be given the full amount.
Okay, proposal on the table for the council, it's, it's a full amount of five hundred. Who's going to second that? Councillor Howard, all those in favour? Yeah, all those against?
I think we print money, don't we?
Um, all those abstaining, one abstention vote to it, that tally. Thank you. Okay, planning subcommittee for appoint two members to the planning subcommittee, uh, because it's not being called, is that right? What do you call it? Um, everyone should have read this. Basically, it needs to be reinstated, because it was a good work in the committee when it was running. Um, if nobody's got any observations, uh, comments, Stan?
Can I propose, uh, Peter?
Peter, yeah, certainly, yeah, all right, okay. Do anybody want to make any comments for yet that one? No?
Jasmine does, I, I, I want to make it.
Right, I'm going to take it, I'm going to listen to what Adam has said.
I'm just wondering if the planning subcommittee, does that mean the planning doesn't come to any of the...
That's the plan. All these planning applications on here hopefully would be dealt with by that bunch of fine people.
So then what happens every other week with parks and planning?
We have an early, we have a, uh, we, we, if we have...
Doesn't get planning.
Don't get planning.
Apart from the bigger issues.
So just, so that, that meeting wouldn't exist?
May not exist.
If there isn't any business for it, then, no, I mean, there is usually some sort of...
Sure, if they're not the caveat to that, well, there's something substantial that the subcommittee will refer.
Exactly, yes. We, even though the subcommittee was in, this planning subcommittee was in force before, we still were having some planning and, uh, planning meetings, because there are other things on there where certain groups were reporting back to it. So, so they would happen, there may not be twenty odd items on it like we have tonight. So it wouldn't automatically abolish the planning meeting that we have at the end of the month, okay? Does that answer the question? Let me work around the table, stand it up and...
Can I, can I say that right from the word go, when this was, um, started, any major, uh, um, planning applications were always deferred to the full council?
Yes. Peter?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, George, I'll come back to you there.
Yes, I mean, I think it makes sense to, um, have a subcommittee, because otherwise you're cluttering up your whole, whole meeting. Um, the only thing I would say in answer to one or two of the comments is, when we look at the council structure, maybe we want to get the terms of reference very clear. I did say this at the last meeting, there's delegation and delegation. Um, certainly, the big, uh, applications need to come to full council, that needs to happen. Also, you need to think about what the local member can do. Can he attend these, uh, subcommittees? I would hope he can, just for the one point, and so on. There's a number of side issues which I'm just...
Well, these will evolve, I think, and in fact, this document has been deferred in May to do with our structure, well, I think it's probably now a good idea. Martin?
Peter kindly touched on some of the things I've raised about that meeting, and is some of the reasons why I resigned is because there was no training.
Okay.
Very good group, which was started by Stan, good intentions, and then I found out that all we were sending to Ruffington County Council after we sat in the end forty to forty-five minutes was, we approve, we disapprove. And so we need to this evening, or we can't go through all the terms of reference, but the comment was made, the council needs to tell the office that we send our comments, so that needs to be sorted tonight. Otherwise, those people are taking time off work and wasting their time. And also ward members need to be able to come if a resident says something, and not sit there as a member of the public and give deputations. They should be able to come and speak, not though, it's very similar to the place up the road, the ward members get asked their opinion at the licensing and development committee. At the moment, as you experienced yourself, you had to come, sit at the back then and give your deputation.
I'm going to play music all the way through it. Okay, um, anything from this side, because otherwise, there was a proposal on the table by councillor Stubbs, that Peter Eind is on the group, it was seconded by...
Joyce.
Joyce? Joyce, did you want to say anything?
I'll just, uh, to point out, the meeting's, sorry, during the day, not at night.
Okay. All those in favour of Peter Eind?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Unanimous. Um, Martin made a valid point, thank you. Problem, Peter? Did you go Pete Hutton as well?
No, I'm just saying, I'm saying, Peter.
Also, the same applies to the tree ward, that she was given discretion to attend, but there is nothing in the terms of reference to actually say she was entitled to come.
The valid point that you made, Martin, that originally when this group was set up, that councillor Stubbs was on it. And I think that I would propose that councillor Stubbs has reconsidered his joining this group as well.
Yes.
So I would propose from the chair that councillor Stubbs...
I would second it if that's what he wants, and you can sort it out.
Anybody got any other comments they want to make? Does anybody else want to reconsider?
I think not.
Um, and who's on it altogether?
Uh, Peter now, Michael Elliott, Vince, Vince, I thought it would be Pete, yeah, so it would be...
That's okay.
Yeah, all right, so proposed by Adam, seconded by Martin, all those in favour of councillor Stubbs? You, are you abstaining, Stan? Is you know this? Does anybody else want to, um, I'm going to leave it up to that committee if they want to redefine their, um, terms, because I know what their terms are.
We, we have to approve them.
Yes, oh, yes. But it is, I mean, it wasn't abolished, was it? It just went in core.
It just, there was just myself and Michael, and, um...
Well, it will be quite unfit, and I will, that will progress, and maybe we'll get some feedback from that group then, on their terms round together. Consider a report relating to the council's website to make any decisions as appropriate. Jasmine, have you got something to say? Richard's report.
All right, we'll refer. Yes, my, it's my report, it's, it's reported to you a while ago, um, um, our, our current website is hosted by L S G County Council from the se- September the first. Uh, that will no longer be the case, so obviously the council, if it still wishes to have a website, uh, sort of look into some various options now. Um, uh, so Jasmine and Rebecca, yeah, Rebecca Hearn, were looking into this a while ago, so it makes sense that Jasmine, I think, sort of, you know, continues that work. The remit and, and one other member, and I will assist if necessary. Um, basically the remit, um, is to look at those options only, okay, that it, um, we transfer it to, uh, the organisations who have been approved by L S G County Council, who look for a framework agreement which is to commune. We look at other providers specialising in websites for parish council sector only, we don't look at independent providers. We perhaps, uh, look at the local company who provided the original website, and we report back to council, uh, with the suggested date being June the fifteenth.
Any comments or observations from around the table? Martin?
If there's no comments, I'd like to propose that Jasmine is allowed to be on the working group.
Are you happy with that, Jasmine?
I don't remember your last name, it's Sally Anne, you're right, that's calling you Sally Anne as well.
Anybody else has been on that group, Mr. Attucky, or Steve?
I think you can have too many people on working groups.
Yes, are those two people happy to be considered for that? So councillor Brooks, we can, those two people are on, yeah. Councillor Brooks has proposed Jasmine and Sally Anne. It's been, without any comments, it's been seconded by Vince. Has anybody got any comments? No? Seconded by councillor Howard, Vince. All those in favour? You can vote yourselves. That is unanimous as well. Second part is the remit of the group is to look at the following... Second part is the remit of the group is to look at the following options only, so.
I propose that we vote for that as a one, rather than each individual, because I'd be able to propose that as one item.
I would like to scrap the one, I think, two communists, the one where we were set some information where they were asking for about seven hundred pounds a year. I don't think it should be considered at all.
I've got quite a lot of them quite at depth when I was looking into it before. And because they specialise in parish council, they did the website that we're already using when they were in the Leshy County Council. It still has to be looked into for an option, I think.
We've all come back to the council to authorise it.
This is misinformation.
Well, if they're happy to look at it, but the cost to me is just astronomical.
Martin, and then bring it back to get the checks on.
And what happens to the third party?
Just cut it short, propose, we take it as read.
Yeah, I think, yeah, well, I think Vince proposed that we take two as read, one, two, three and four, all items on there. I'll take that as Peter's second in that day, if that's okay. All those in favour? You know this.
Where is your name?
Thank you, Peter. All the best to your family also.
Is that for the mayor's photograph?
Please. Okay. Item number sixteen, shall we go straight through to propose on this one?
No, we need to comment.
No, 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 right, okay, this is a document, for those members that aren't aware, the current chain is keeps falling apart, the link's coming apart. The metal enamel badge on the front keeps coming off, so there was an idea put out that we should look at getting either a new chain or whatever. There's a document. I'm looking for comments around the table. I'll go to Joyce first.
This has been on the cards for years. It's nothing new. The problem I have is it seems to be a fait accompli. This or nothing. Who has decided that? I did a lot of research with Fattorini the last time around. I think we should have been given some more information before we decide to spend all this money on just one thing. I'm sorry, I just think, I don't think it's the right way to go about this.
Martin?
I personally am not very fond of this one and there are some very, very nice ones.
Martin?
A member of the public pointed out to me that you can buy civic regalia from a shop on eBay that is suitable for councils and masons for about four hundred pounds of the same composite and cheaper if you just went for plated metal. I, my view of it is that we don't go with this. I support Joyce. I don't think we need to renew it. We have a perfectly good chain which apparently keeps breaking, so why don't we?
It does. It's not cam, it does.
Well, it never used to. Sorry. My suggestion is, is we reject this, but obviously we'll have more comments. But we have the existing chain shortened and we have a nice display cabinet for the rest. And we stop, yeah, that's one part of it, and we stop adding to it because four hundred pounds a year, it just doesn't seem, you can't justify it. It's two thousand and sixteen now.
Thank you. Vince?
Councillor Brooks, as you have come up with a lot of research in this, I would propose that we defer this. And if you would like to do some more research and present it next time.
Well, Joyce did. I remember being in the meeting when Joyce presented things.
Joyce, as she's already said, is very busy.
Yeah, but my thing is that we don't have it. When we tell members of the public we can't afford to do this and we can't afford to do that, why are we asking to spend four and a half thousand pounds on that?
I would just like to say that I think there's a case for saying that all of this is outdated and is it not possible to have some sort of lapel identification for the mayor of the day? I've been either wearing it and concentrated on the confidence of the council. There'd be an identification that someone is general counsel, but not in this very grand, I would say, rather fashionable.
I'm going to come around the table. Jake, right, I'm going to just hold, stop there a minute. Right, let's keep it. I'm going to come to Joyce. If we can get some common sense on this.
Thank you. Having worn this chain twice, it is uncomfortable, it slips. It ruins ladies' dresses because they have to pin them on. I would go for a chain. I would not go for an insignia at all. That is a poor relation to any other parish in this county. And we are a parish, whether we get it or not. I would go for a chain. But to be given a few more options, I would go for this whatever it is, felt, because that actually stops the chain from slipping. Now, the mayor some time ago, a good before any of you were on the council, had a gold chain that went round the back and under the collar. This has now been lost. It has.
Right, I think what it is, we don't want to get into blueprinting and designing a chain. We want to decide what we're doing on this document. I'm going to come to Peter, then I'll come to, that's right, I'll come to Michael, then I'll come to Sally Anne. Michael?
Yeah, I tend to support what Michael said. The question is, do we need this little regalia in the twenty-first century? And the other one, of course, at this time to financial constraints, the proposal here is more for money.
Okay, Sally Anne?
Is, I mean, I've not seen this chain up close. Is there a possibility that you could put it on a velvet collar, which only costs a hundred and ninety pounds on this list?
Right, good point, well brought out. And this is where I believe, now we're leaning towards what Vince said, is that this needs to be deferred. Well, there's two things. If anybody wants to propose that it's deferred so that further investigations can be carried out. This was done by Alison. Alison put a lot of time and effort into this. She sought advice from me. In actual fact, I slightly guided Alison because there was no other direction given to her. The council took the decision, let's go and have a look at another chain, and this is what she came back with. Wrongly or rightly, I think that it probably should be deferred and maybe councillor Lucas, who is one of the longer-serving members, might want to take on an investigation in partnership with one of the councillors and the assistant clerk to look at other options. So that is one option. Martin, you want to say something?
Yeah, we have a situation with the mayor's chain and former mayors. That's what yours is, isn't it, Joyce?
No.
Sorry, I thought it was.
It is a former mayor.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
But I've made it myself.
One member of the public who read about this said, well, why can't you get something nice at the back, put the existing one on there and go for, it's following the lines of what the two councillors at the end have said, and have a small chain which just represents the larger chain that would be on display.
Can I just do a pot and shot on this? If you look at this, the medallion on our own, on the existing chain says urban district, doesn't it? Or something. This says Oakham Town Council. On every parish, they've got a medallion which says Cotislaw.
Okay.
You know, I'm sorry.
It says Oakham Town. Right, I think what it is, is there anybody who wants to propose that this is deferred for further investigation by, proposed by Vince, seconded by Sally Anne, all those in favour that it's deferred?
I'm more than happy as well to assist with this.
Right, that's unanimous. Yeah, and so I propose then that councillor Howard and councillor Lucas look into this matter further and report back to council. Yeah, so that's proposed, seconded by Sally Anne, all those in favour? Is that unanimous? Yeah, thank you. Item seventeen, high sound, it's eight o'clock. The recording, photographing and use of social media at meetings, this is to review and agree on the council's protocols of the above. Has anybody got any comments? I've got is a purple paper. Tracy?
Section D, this is about the open meetings. I have got an issue per se with the whole of the document.
Yep.
But regards to open meetings, certain things that need to be held in private or moved to private session. Obviously, I've been a book bear about contracts being awarded in the public meeting with it being recorded because I don't feel provider or contractor should be told after when the public have been. So I think something needs to be.
What it is, is that there is a, this is part of our code of conduct. At the moment, we're in a public meeting, there's a member of the public at the back there, and we are recording our own meeting and anybody can walk in or out and also one of our own councillors has chosen to record the meeting, which we've been doing for some time. When we go into an exempt item, this is when it is not public and that's when that is turned off, the public are asked to leave and all recording devices, including phones, are turned off. That is the rulebook. Councillors, or no, rather, people may breach those regulations. We cannot prevent people from breaching regulations.
I appreciate that.
But this is a guideline saying that members of the public are entitled to record meetings. Was it Pickles?
I appreciate that, but in terms of awarding contracts, then I think they should be made.
Right. The clerk advisory with awarding contracts is slightly different, is handled differently as well. Yeah?
I think the decision comes to council.
Yes.
And is discussed and open because my only concern is you could be identifying a provider.
Yes.
It goes public. That provider might turn around the next day or two days later and say, no, I don't want that contract anymore. Or you've not allowed the other ones that weren't successful to, 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 um, to challenge the process. You can't challenge the decisions, you can challenge the process.
So that is more about what items do we class as exempt?
Yes, that's, that's my question. We have, yeah. And I have offered to support Richard in to bring to council a very, I know because it's like touch awarding contracts, so we wouldn't need the whole, but it is about putting something robust in place to enable us to be open, transparent, but also mitigate any risks when awarding contracts because there are a few.
Okay, I take avoid the card. So that you've already spoken originally around.
It's something, it's something you can't avoid.
What?
Once, you cannot avoid it. The law says it must be decided in public and we can't stop somebody tweeting it here. We can't, it just cannot be avoided. That is, the people know that when they tend to run companies, they are tending in a public way.
Well, we can look at how we do contracts in the future. This is specifically for the public recording meetings.
I disagree that this has been put to council because this has just basically been copied from Ruffham County Council. And there are a lot of, it doesn't actually say whether this is going to apply to members because there's no way I am going to sit as it was implied in that corner over there to film meetings. So I don't even really know why this was brought for review.
Martin, a question. You can through the chair, yes, through the chair.
Yes, please.
Your camera, I've got your permission. Do you have to sit next to it? I mean, because it's a bit imposing having that there.
Well, no, either to me it's out of the way. It's not pointing at you, Stan, it's pointing at the chair.
If it's put over there.
But I can't because I would have to get up every twenty minutes. The nature of any digital camera is that you have to, that's why you keep seeing me touching it because you only get twenty minutes recording. And that's the same on that camera. Because I did look at that, because obviously I don't want to cause problems at the council, that does the same.
Thank you. I just wanted to know.
Yeah, that's the issue, but this doesn't actually say it applies to members. I don't really know why this has come tonight because we have what is required by the law. A lot of it's nonsense. If the BBC came here and filmed us, we couldn't say, don't edit it.
Can I just ask?
They're not going to put the whole hour on news, are they? I don't know why it's come. That's why I want the answer.
If you let me, can anybody mind if I speak, man, as the chair?
Yes, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Brooks.
Acting chairman.
This blue paper, this purple paper, is this the current policy that Oakham Town Council is applying by?
Yes, there are just two differences, okay?
Which are?
Regulations about any member of the public, that was originally all an elected member, that was added in.
Yeah.
And the other one was identifying where the area would be, okay? So it's basically what we're working to at the moment. Now, the question obviously that Martin is raising is that should an exception be made for members that they are allowed to do that? And in that case, all twelve, all the members could have a camera.
Well, because they can do it on their phones. Adam's brought a camera and sat it on that table there. So are we all supposed to sit in the corner? That's what I'm saying.
That's Michael's glasses.
No, no, but you did at one time bring a camera.
That's okay, that's okay. Tracy, do we not want this to drag on too long?
No, I'm just coming back to my original point is, yes, you can't, you can't ask people to edit out, but then maybe as when we come back to deciding the council structure and the working group, then that's maybe where we set out actually how we edit what we say at the public meetings. So that's some things. Why, you cannot award contracts in the public domain for some of these.
No, but this is not a business. It's a council. It's like a court.
It's public money.
Okay, right.
That's why we can't hide it because it's public, because it's public money, we can't hide it.
Right, thank you. I'm going to ask everybody to be quiet for one moment. Everybody compose itself. Let's have ten seconds. There are certain rules to do with private business, certain rules to do with public limited businesses and certain rules to do with town councils. We are not discussing that in detail. We're discussing this document here. What is the answer again on this thing about contracts?
Well, Tracy and I are going to be looking at contracts, so.
So let's leave that one to us. Does anybody want to make, does anybody want to change or accept this document as it is? Martin?
I don't think it should be changed. The policy that was originally there is not a problem. And a lot of these things which say you can't edit it are not enforceable and it just is, somebody was mad.
Is there a proposal?
That we don't change anything from it. Because it's all, I looked at the standing orders online today and there's no problem.
Yeah, I accept what Martin says, but I do feel as a councillor, I think that what Martin should do is to record and show the whole recording.
I do. I do. It's on there. They go on there the whole thing.
Edit it at all?